Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Malone, Superintendent of Schools. I'd like to welcome the community to the July 24, 2019 School Committee Reorganization Meeting. The July 24 School Committee will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session of a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if there is anyone recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. I see no one. Would you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a further announcement and a explanation of why we've moved into a reorganization meeting, I would like to announce that Mr. Dennis Francis has resigned his position on the Tewksbury School Committee effective today, July 24, 2019. With that, at this time, I will entertain nominations for the petition of Chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I'll nominate Mr. Keith Sullivan to be the Chairperson.
I'll second.
Mr. Keith Sullivan has been placed in nomination, and there is a second. Are there any other nominations for petition of Chairperson? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that nomination for Chairperson be closed.
I'll make that motion, close the nominations.
And we have a second as well. Motion has been moved and seconded. On the name of Mr. Keith Sullivan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, congratulations, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Malone, and thank you to my fellow school committee members for their faith and confidence. I certainly look forward to serving the residents in the position of Chairman as thoughtfully and diligently as not only my predecessor but the predecessor to Dennis, who both served greatly on this committee. So, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to entertain nominations for the Vice Chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I'd like to make a motion that Jamie Cutlass serve as Vice Chair.
Second that.
Do I hear any other motions for Vice Chair? Hearing none. Like to make a motion to approve Jamie Cutlass as the Vice Chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Members.
At this time, I'd like to entertain nominations for the petition of Clerk for the Tewksbury School Committee.
Shannon Demos.
Shannon Demos. Do I have a second?
Second that.
I have a nomination and a second. Do we have any other nominations for the position of Clerk? Seeing none, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor of Shannon Demos becoming the Clerk for the Tewksbury School Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos.
Thank you.
Okay. Second order of business here, slightly out of turn. On behalf of the School Committee and the Administration, both past and present, I would like to express our sincere gratitude to Mr. Francis for his over 20 years of dedicated service to the Tewksbury Public School Systems, whether it was starting over 20 years ago as his work in the PACS or most recently, the last decade that he has served on the School Committee. Dennis was an honorable and decent man. He always did what was best for our students. His commitment to lowering not only the classroom sizes to under 25, but his tireless work on both this high school building school committee and the most recent elementary school will have a long-lasting effect on our community and will only help improve achievement throughout the district. So, please, if you see Mr. Francis in a store, on Veterans Day, on Memorial Day, please thank him not only for his dedicated service to his country, but for helping this school district be a better place. All right, next order of business, the School Committee vacancy, and I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Malone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the vacancy on the School Committee, the School Committee has some decisions to make. There are three possible courses of action here. The first one would be that the Tewksbury Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, on their own can opt to call for a special election under Section 10. Due to the timing and upcoming elections, I'm not sure that is likely, but that purview would be within the Selectmen's view. What is under the purview of the School Committee? There are two options. The School Committee can vote in open meeting to notify the Board of Selectmen by letter requesting a joint meeting to elect an individual to fill the vacancy until the next annual town election. Or, the School Committee can do nothing, and the appointment will fall exclusively on the Board of Selectmen. So, those are the options available for the School Committee to entertain this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for some discussion, please.
Mr. Chair, I feel as though it should be a collaborative discussion amongst both the Selectmen and the School Committee, as I think it will impact both the town side and the school side. My opinion would be that we should be meeting alongside the Selectmen to appoint a fifth member to our Board.
Mr. Cutlass? I would agree with that, too, and I would make that motion to send a letter to the Selectmen and request a joint meeting so we could collaborate with them in the selection of a fifth member for our Board.
Can I just add, if Mr. Stadman has anything before?
I agree fully with Jamie.
Would you like to second that motion, Mr. Stadman?
I'd second it, yes.
Great. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of sending a letter to the Selectmen to make sure we fill the vacancy of the School Committee and are also included in that process of the nine-person search committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
In addition, Mr. Chairman, the Committee this evening needs to entertain a solution to the vacancy on the Elementary School Building Committee. Mr. Francis served as Chair of that building committee. The determination of Chair of the Building Committee would be under the purview of the Building Committee itself. However, what is vacant at this time is a School Committee representative on that Elementary School Building Committee. At this time, the Committee should entertain making the determination how they're going to approach that vacancy.
Okay. I'll open up the discussion for my colleagues. Mr. Stadman?
I think with the amount of work that Ms. Demos has done with the Committee, I nominate Ms. Demos for the open chair.
Excellent. I agree. Any other discussion, Brian?
I'll second that.
And I agree as well, so. With that being said, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Stadman to appoint Shannon Demos to the School Committee, to be our School Committee Representative, one of the two on the Elementary School Building Committee, seconded by Mr. Cutlass. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to make a quick motion to adjourn for two minutes, which time we will convene our July 24 regular School Committee meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, sorry. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the order, the July 24 meeting. At 7:12, the regular School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting, and if so, please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, we're going to move along to recognitions. I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this evening, we have a great opportunity to recognize some of our partners that help us here in Tewksbury Public Schools, and some of the improvements that you've seen in the district come from various areas, but when we have partner organizations that work with us to help develop that, it's certainly a significant accomplishment for us, and it's a great opportunity for us to work into the community. And with that, I'd hand it over to Ms. Regan to talk a little bit more about Mr. Stamp and the Corning Foundation.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. Mr. Chair, Members of the Committee, as you know, for some years now, we've made it a priority in the Tewksbury Public Schools to really build and develop our STEM and STEAM programming, K through 12, and that doesn't happen overnight. Under the leadership of Mr. Stamp, he's partnered now with Corning Foundation for two years, and we're really proud of the work they're doing with our district to start up STEM programming and STEM labs, really, in two of our schools. With that, I'm going to have Mr. Stamp come on up to the podium with members that have joined us tonight from Corning Foundation, so that Jason can give you, one, first introduce the members that he has here from Corning Foundation, thank them, and just show you what their seed money has done for our schools.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the School Committee. We're here to say thank you to the Corning Foundation. This is Eva, and this is Brent from Corning. They're here to present us with a check. This is the second year now that they've helped fund our STEM program. So, just a little history, it was actually Greg Hoff, two years ago, reached out to our district and said, "Hey, we're here. Maybe we can help you. How can we collaborate?" So, from there, we applied for a grant. We were able to use that money to develop a STEM lab at the Ryan School, and I have pictures I can show you of that real quick, and now we're in the process of developing a lab for the Wynn School. And I applied for that grant, and we were approved, and they're here to present us with a check for that tonight. So, let me just show you real quick.
(Inaudible)
I wish I had a picture of all of it, because the lab was a little, it was basically a basic science lab initially, with just the high-science tables. Now, a lot of this design also came from the teachers in this, basically 95% of the design of this came from the teachers of this lab. But with the money from Corning, along with some other money that we budgeted and some collaboration with the teachers and other folks, we were able to get this done. So, we're really proud, we're really hoping that we can get a lab similar to this at the Wynn School. So, thank you. So, Eva and Brent are going to talk just a little bit about the Corning Foundation and then.
Great.
Hi, nice to meet you.
How are you?
Hello.
Good. So, the Corning Foundation really believes strongly in supporting the communities in which our businesses are, and Corning Incorporated has businesses globally, but the Corning Foundation supports everything in North America, which Corning still has a lot of sites in North America. So, it gives money to the sites in North America to give community grants, to really build up the community, and hopefully, you know, maybe get some workers in later and everything else. And our division, so our corporate headquarters is in Corning, New York, but our division is the Life Sciences Division, and our headquarters are in Tewksbury. So, we really feel strongly about supporting the Tewksbury Schools, about supporting the Tewksbury community. And myself, with my training as a scientist, I have, any kind of science education is near and dear to me, so I'm very happy to support this.
And so, just wanted to amplify that statement, and we have over 150 employees in our office here in Tewksbury, many of which live in the area and some of which live in Tewksbury as well, so this also reverberates not just for the company, but also for our employees who really take pride in also contributing to the communities in which we work. So, certainly, not only on behalf of Eva and I, but also the over 150 employees that work in Tewksbury, supporting this effort.
That's fantastic. On behalf of the Tewksbury School Committee, our Administration, and most importantly, our students, we can't thank you enough. We're more than grateful how gracious you have been to allow us to provide this. My son's in the Ryan. He loves STEM. We started STEM here a few years ago in the district. It became a priority, and for us now to be able to have it in five and six and seven and eight is really fantastic. So, we can't thank the Corning Foundation enough. It's almost $20,000 in two years, and we are so very appreciative that you guys are willing to give back to the community, and hopefully, we can start getting some of our students there employed over your facility in the near future. So, thank you very much on behalf of the School Committee.
If we could have him stand right there together with Mr. Stamp. Jason, can we get a picture of our friends from Corning?
If I'm going, we're all going.
Okay, that's fine.
You want to go?
Yeah.
All right, well, we're all joining, right?
We're all going over.
Is it Brent or Brent? Brent, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You know, I just want to say, these classrooms really do help our children think like scientists and act like scientists. It's not enough to just change the way we teach, but having a real lab. You're welcome. Move in, move in, okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
We're going to give back to the big guy.
Love to take that opportunity, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, Eva. So, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Get some money.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. John, is he at summer camp?
No, he's gone off three weeks as camp.
I'm going to say he was at summer camp. Oh, God. Moving along, Mr. Malone, I've been informed that our student representative is still at summer camp, so hopefully, he'll have a report for us at the next meeting. And I'd like to move on to the Citizens Forum, actually, because we have no presentations. I see a few people in the audience. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name. Not seeing anyone. I'd like to move on to the next order of business, which is the approval of our minutes. I'd like to turn it over to our Clerk, Mrs. Demos.
I move to approve the minutes of June 12, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. I'd also like to move the submission and payment of bills, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Demos to do that as well.
I move to approve a lump payroll ending June 13, 2019, in the amount of $805,117.74.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the payroll ending June 13, sorry, 2019, in the amount of $805,117.74. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. It's a unanimous vote. Mrs. Demos?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the payroll period ending June 13, 2019, in the amount of $1,322,128.28.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll ending June 13, 2019. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the payroll period ending June 27, 2019, in the amount of $1,275,210.11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the payroll period ending June 27, 2019. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the FY19 payroll period ending July 11, 2019, in the amount of $249,008.39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending July 11, 2019. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And finally, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the FY20 payroll period ending July 11, 2019, in the amount of $944,120.27.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll for the pay period ending, sorry, July 11. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. That certainly was a lot.
My pleasure, Mr. Chair.
All right. I'd like to turn to Mr. Malone for the Superintendent and Staff reports, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did receive some positive news early in the week, specific to Chapter 70 funding. On Sunday, the House and Senate Conference Committee released its recommendation for the FY20 state budget. The budget proposes a budget of $43.1 million, an increase of 4.1% over FY19. What that translates into us is, hopefully, something that is going to be a final budget that increases funding the education. These changes that are adapted in that House and Senate Conference Committee are consistent with many of the foundation budget changes put forth by the PROMISE Act, if a seven-year phase-in were implemented. So, while they're also looking at approving the budget for FY20, there's an element in there of true Chapter 70 reform. So, that FY20 budget proposal from the House and Senate Committee would be consistent with the PROMISE Act, but it is not the PROMISE Act, so that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. In addition, part of that would be, special education circuit breaker would rise $26 It's not sure how that would break down out of that committee and where that would reflect further in the PROMISE Act, or how much of that would be specific to any changes in the calculation in circuit breaker. We are certainly hoping for full funding of circuit breaker coming out of the state level. A big thank you after multiple correspondence, telephone calls, and speaking in person with Representative Robertson, Representative Nguyen, Senator Lyons, they have been very supportive in this funding measure, and we can't thank them enough for being that supportive of the schools. So, big hats off to them. Addition to that, I think I spoke last time we were here about the up-and-coming new app that will be coming out for families to load on their phone and other devices, to hopefully make it easier. We're in the final development of that piece, and a final development of an informational page that would go out to parents for usage, so we're looking forward for that to increase parent communication. Mr. Libby is going to talk a little bit later about some of the capital improvements we are undertaking in the district right now as part of summer recess, but I would also like to make the Committee aware that even though we're trying to accomplish these projects where typically laid off for the summer, we still, our schools are very busy. We have students in a lot of locations. The 21st Century Learning Grant at the Dewing School has up to 72 students on any given day. These are Dewing students who are participating in activities and field trip. Principal Garrish and Dr. Bastieri last week attended a conference on the grant in Washington, D.C., in hopes that we can make the criteria and service the elements that will allow us to renew that grant for next year. And also, we have spread that application out to the Heathbrook School as well. So, hopefully, we'll, even though that's all new, interaction with students during the summertime that we've not had before, we're actually hoping that will increase.
Malone, just a quick question. Was that relative to that three-year grant?
Correct, and that's entitlement for that money, but you have to reapply for it every year. They look at the benchmarks, then the services, and the elements reporting back, and that's why they were down in Washington, D.C., to see what elements would need to be put in there so that they can be approved for the funding for the second year.
Excellent.
So, we're hopes of that. The application of Heathbrook will run in a parallel cycle to that, since it's not...
For my new colleagues, that was, I don't want to get the number wrong. That was a significant number grant per year, correct?
It was...
$175,000 per year.
Per year, for three years.
Yes, that's a great grant, so. Just wanted to make sure our colleagues and also the public was aware of, and that was spearheaded by those at the Dewing.
Principal Garrish had worked with that grant in previous districts, sawed it out, and again, that is programming we have not had before. So, significant accomplishment. Thank you. In addition, we're continuing on with the special education summer programming that is being held at the Dewing, the Wynn, and Tewksbury Mill High School. On any given day, there could be up to 165 students involved in that process. We've added some elements and continue to explore how to improve that programming, but we've increased interaction with partners such as Strong Water Farm, some opportunities for goal-setting, utilizing Sports Zone, move and groove curriculum, so we'll continue to look at that offering and how to increase it and how to improve it, but there is a hefty number of students involved in that. Alphabet has begun their summer camp process. They are located at the North Street School, the Wynn Middle School, and the REC Center. They have servicing up to 275 students at any given time, which would be an increase over what community service had previously done for summer programming. We continue to work with them, to assist them in working with parents and messaging out their program, and looking at all sorts of elements, and those students are, in fact, participating in field trips, fun activities, and other educational opportunities. Summer school continues at Tewksbury Mill High School, along with our service learning grant at Tewksbury Mill High School, so we have students participating in opportunities here as well. So, we are very busy with students over the summer, probably engaging more students this summer than we have certainly ever had in my tenure, and I think in a very long while here in Tewksbury. So, with that, we're very proud that we continue to engage students over the summer, but it's always a work in progress. In addition to that element, I'd also like to, Mr. Stamp has left, but Mr. Stamp was instrumental in helping us look at the Safer Schools in Community Local Equipment and Technology Grant. This was a grant that came out statewide to enhance technology and security in school districts. It was a lengthy application process that Mr. Stamp engaged in, along with Dr. Bastieri, our grant writer, and we had just found out last week that we received the grant for $80,000, which was... It was a lengthy application process that Mr. Stamp engaged in along with Dr. Bastieri, our grant writer, and we had just found out last week that we received the grant for eighty thousand dollars, which was targeted to help pay for the upgrade and renovation of security cameras and security system at the Ryan Elementary School. And what we are engaging in and have looked at, and we've looked at in our long-range planning, is a way to not only enhance our security and camera systems, but make sure they are integrated throughout the district. So we're very happy with that, very excited about that, and that's a great feather in our cap and a great way to help our students and our staff be safe in our buildings. With that, I'll hand that over to Ms. Regan.
If I could interrupt Jason for a minute, I'm getting, I just got a text that our meeting has not come back up on TV, so maybe you can address that.
And just one moment, Superintendent. Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent? I just have one comment. I've got fantastic feedback with regards to the, is it Strong Water Farm, the horse program?
Equine interaction.
Good things that are going on down there, so that's, I understand that's new this year?
It's brand-new. We took a risk, we tried, and we want to do more of that with that. You know, some things may not work as others, but we're trying to explore other ways to help students, whether in special education summer programming, extended-year programming, other opportunities we may offer through the summer, and let that bleed over into the school year. More opportunities to get students out, interacting in an educational environment, not so much that traditional field trip element, but what is the real educational benefit in interaction out in the community, which is really what we're looking for. And we've gotten that same piece. So we were very lucky. There was a lot of hard work out of the Special Education Department to coordinate that. It was a one-week-long event, wasn't for all students, but it was a way to get it off the ground, and we feel like with success with that, it's a great way to start, continue to thinking in that way and expand it where we can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mrs. Regan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have some great news. I'm going to sandwich my updates with some really great news, and the first of which is our federal entitlement grants. We have some preliminary news that our Title I grant is back up to where it was a few, couple of years back. Right now, the preliminary numbers say that our Title I grant is up to about three hundred forty-one thousand dollars, up from our one hundred forty-one thousand dollars. This is probably an increase in our economically disadvantaged students or families listed in our most recent census. We're one of those districts that are right on the cusp. Just a couple of families up or down can really affect our entitlement grant. We haven't received the numbers yet on our Title II-A, if we're eligible for Title III, or what our Title IV-A funds will be at this time. On that note of federal grants, Principal Garrish, together with our district grant writer, Dr. Cindy Bastieri, went out to Washington, DC last week in efforts to learn more about how to keep that 21st Century Grant growing and how to support the Heathbrook in applying for that grant as well. They networked with many other districts who are proud recipients of the grant, learned quite a bit about other opportunities. We look forward to hearing more about other federal grant opportunities for Tuxbury. Our, many of our principals attended the National Principal Conference that happens in the summer, and this year it was right here in Boston. They likewise networked with principals who are also, you know, working on problem-solving different issues of student supports in their schools, how to best support students and families, how to promote more student voice in our curriculum planning. So they had a great time, and always, whenever our administrators can network with other administrators from around, whether the state or the country, it's always a win for Tuxbury. They learn quite a bit. I have a couple of updates from our commissioner. Our new commissioner, Jeffrey Riley, has continued to promise us at superintendent meetings that he's looking to make improvements to the accountability system as we know it. And in your consent agenda, you'll see the most recent update around accountability. And I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but really just sort of highlight the improvements. What we've entered in as of today, without our most current MCAS raw data, is what we call the discrepancy reporting window. The discrepancy reporting window is a little lengthier than it usually is. Typically, we're faced with about four or five days to scrub the student data, and that means how students are coded and really make corrections to that data, because it's from that discrepancy period that then we get preliminary MCAS data. And if we don't make sure all students are coded correctly, it may go against us in our accountability for the district. You can also see that there's been improvements in how courses that meet that advanced coursework accountability feature have been added, in particular Project Lead the Way. And the calculation rates for our English language learner subgroups are changing, where they're collectively taking those participation rates across all their MCAS. And you'll see that there's a different balance in the way our two-year data will be calculated. They will weigh the 2019 data heavier, sixty percent, 2018 data at forty percent when calculating one of our progress groups. Now, you can see that there are four ways in which they will categorize our progress to meet the projected targets that the state has set for us. We will either be meeting or exceeding our targets, substantially progressing, and they said towards progress, but they meant target progress, moderately progressing towards those targets, or limited or no progress towards the targets. So it will remain to be seen where we're at once we actually get some preliminary data. I think the greatest update in all of this is number three. I don't know if you recall, last year I told you that students, even if they are deemed not tested because they've been medically documented as absent, still count against us in our MCAS participation rate for the first time moving forward now in this new accountability system. If they're properly documented medically absent and not tested, they will not count against the district. Okay? And then you will see that there's updates to what chronic absenteeism and those advanced coursework will be updated for the 17 and 18 data, and we'll weave into our 19 data. So stay tuned. We're still trying to understand and learn a lot about these moving targets, and we'll report more to you as we receive the data and as we understand it. Any questions on that before I move on?
Just a quick question. About how many students fell under that? I don't recall from the last time.
Well, we had, we were luckily under that target, but we did know in that discrepancy period there were students that were improperly labeled.
What do you mean? Is it a handful? Is it a few, one?
We cannot fall below ninety-five percent, right, for the chronic? And we did, but then we were able to capture it back. If you remember, I can't remember the number of students, but we realized we were also coding students improperly in Aspen. We've corrected that. We feel we're going to see quite an improvement in those percentages this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
And our principals keep very good records if a student is medically absent, so I think it'll be easy to pick out those discrepancies in this reporting window. All right, the second update is not in your packet, but let me just go back two winters ago. If you remember, most districts far exceeded the amount of snow days they could take, and it really did impact districts if they were going very late into June, and some even after the end of June, to meet their one hundred eighty days. So the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education allowed districts to pilot what they call an alternative structured learning day program, otherwise referred to as an ASLD. You may formally know them as blizzard bags, weather bags, weather days, different ways students can learn while they're not at school. They allowed districts to pilot and present a pilot. They even allowed districts to receive some waivers to not have to stay in school as late into the summer as they would have needed to. And then what happened was, there were some, quite a bit of concerns raised from different stakeholders, whether it be families, students of need who were not in school and receiving services, unions. And what happened was, they used that pilot year to really identify if these alternative structured learning day programs were going to be beneficial to children. Then we had a mild winter. Many districts got out really early. So Desi went back to the table and have decided to discontinue the alternative structured learning day program pilot after the coming school year. Only districts who had an approved pilot for an ASLD program will be able to continue the use of that program into this school year, and then they will no longer allow new programs or allow districts to use those alternative ways of educating students. There's probably a lot more to hear on this. I think each year we have difficult winters, you know, new ideas come to the table. We were in the process of looking at an ASLD program with our own TTA unit, but at this point, we really don't know where we should proceed on this and probably table it for now.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. We have a lot going on in the district around curriculum work. In this very room, this whole week, we have about seventy educators from thirty different districts. If you remember, I told you, the history and social studies frameworks have drastically changed. We have thirty districts participating together with approximately six of our own teachers, but as I said, seventy educators to a hundred throughout the school year, working on redeveloping all of the curriculum maps, K through twelve, to help meet the needs of those new standards for our students, which will be implemented this year. Additionally, I'm proud to tell you that within our own district, one hundred sixty-one teachers are currently working on their curriculum unit mapping project that we started. We kicked off this school year, they were trained, and they are continuing that process to the tune of about twenty-five hundred work hours this summer. So I'm very proud of the work our teachers are doing and look forward to see the results from them. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
I just need a...
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Regan? Well, excellent.
So, just going to give you a quick update on summer projects that are going on around the district. We have projects going on in every building. As Mr. Malone said, buildings are busy with students. We're working around those programs and continue to try to get everything accomplished that we need to at each school. At the Dewing, we're doing a video camera upgrade for the security system, an audiovisual system upgrade in cafeteria for presentations, school-wide presentations. They had a really old audio microphone system projecting onto a screen for the laptop. It was not good. We're going to get an upgrade for that school, so it can be more effective in those school-wide meetings. The MDF room with our new computer equipment, there's a need to keep it cool. We've got an AC system set up there. It's going to be finished, I believe, tomorrow. Electrical upgrade continues at that school to be able to provide more cooling in areas where we need that, and power for, again, technology and devices that we're pushing into our classrooms, creating a greater electrical need. And we're also working through a grant for a standalone water heater. It's about a hundred thousand dollar project. It's going to cost us about ten thousand through this grant, so the water, the whole boiler for the whole school won't need to be turned on all summer, so we can have hot water in the bathrooms. This will be a domestic hot water heater to provide water for the school. Exterior doors, about ninety percent complete, just a basic solid door. We didn't want windows. These are, they come out prime gray. We're going to get them painted, though, before students return, but they're leather tight. A lot of our doors at the schools, you know, they have snow blowing in, windy days in the wintertime, not airtight and certainly not efficient, so this is a big upgrade for the classroom areas. Produced some increased parking out in front of the school, two rows of angle parking on the entrance going into the Dewing, one row of angle parking on the way out. We're hoping that this will help us create some new traffic patterns in the morning, help us with some parent drop-offs and bus drop-offs and van drop-offs there at the Dewing School, and have that flow go a little bit easier. Just a landscape raised bed over in the gym, outside of the gym area, that our maintenance folks produced for us there. Moving on to the Heathbrook, again, security camera upgrade is in the works there, an audiovisual system upgrade for that cafeteria, same thing, working with real old equipment, be able to have school-wide meetings in a more productive manner. The MDF room was in a, about a four-by-four closet off the teacher's room, gave off a lot of heat in the interior space. We're moving that to the library and getting it in a cool space so that equipment can function properly and keep our school running technology-wise. Finished roof coating. We did about a third of the building last summer with a ten-year warranty roof coating product that rolls on. It's a white coating that goes over the school. They say it does help a little bit with heating, hot spaces in the summertime, it doesn't absorb as much heat, but we're planning to get the other two-thirds of the building done this summer. And we're also doing the same exterior door project at the Heathbrook that we're doing at the Dewing. We're also undertaking a large boiler update. This is not the new product that we're looking at. This is the before picture. Yeah, it's a, we're working with Guardian, our, the town's energy consultant, and getting a new hot water heater for the school, a boiler to produce the heat, pumps to pump the heat out to the classrooms, and all the plumbing and electrical work that goes along with that through our Guardian partnership with, through the town. But that will be started, started Wednesday with the plumbing and electrical work. There's some asbestos abatement that needs to take place. That's going to happen shortly, and then the boiler removal and replacement, and they're guaranteeing us it will be done before school starts. Outside of Heathbrook, again, some raised beds that our maintenance staff has put in. The thinking is to try to make a more defined area, and it's going to help us with sort of collecting and student movement in the morning there at drop-off and pickup times for the Heathbrook School. Just some more pictures of how that looks. We also hope that these, as these trees grow in, it's going to give us a little bit of coverage in front of that loading dock area, which is kind of unsightly in the front of the building. The North Street School, we're getting some stencils done on the blacktop, and the playground in the back, decals on bathroom walls, and sentry walk in the hallway that, hoping to get some help from a citizen in town who is doing some Eagle Scout work, and he may be undertaking some of this work for us at the North Street School. And also an audiovisual system there, upgrade in the cafeteria. They do weekly meetings with their school-wide, school-wide weekly meetings, and we want them to be able to have those meetings in a more, more technical way. We're doing some boiler repairs at the Trayhand School, and we installed some, about three classrooms worth of window fans in some of those greenhouse areas that got really, really hot when we had the hot season a couple of years ago. We're doing five more classrooms with those window fans. They seem to be pretty effective in just at least keeping the air moving around, not cooling the area. We've also, the vestibule has been installed, similar to the North Street, so when folks walk into the building, they can access a window at the office, but they would need to be buzzed into the main area of the school. So that's an ongoing project there. Also, hallway paints. This yellow over here and royal blue was the previous color. That's kind of a before, and it's, we're switching over to this sort of gray and darker gray, two-tone look. And that was done with the help of our folks at the Rector House Correction, who we had their services for about a week. Ryan School, also getting audiovisual system upgrade in the cafeteria, again, antiquated system. Black bar replacement, not a real fun item, but it's something that keeps our building operating more efficiently. Also, video camera upgrade going on there, and we've got new system clocks that will sync up, and all of our clocks will be on the same time. That's been a problem in some of our classrooms, working off of battery clocks. That's been a problem in some of our classrooms, working off of battery clocks. Wind School, that STEM area that the Corning folks are helping us fund, we'll be, we'll be undertaking that, getting that up and ready for the school, for the school year. We have our vestibule design that we're going over with all of our stakeholders, see if it works for the school. That's something that we'd like to get done sooner rather than later. And also video camera upgrade at the Wynn is about ninety-five percent complete there. That Wynn camera system will be the hub of our system. Our resource officer will be able to see every school in the district from his desk at the Wynn. So when people call him and say, can you review video? He used to have to go to the school and go through their video systems. Now he'll be able to do that right from his desk at the Wynn School. So that'll be the central hub for our security.
Including the high school?
Including the high school.
Okay, thank you.
At the high school, also Makerspace STEM items. We've upgraded the language lab, hardware and software. We repaired some catch basins out in our parking lot here with some paving folks that we've had around. New lights in the TV studio. The town is actually helping us with that project. Upgrade for the lights in the auditorium. We had some real old, older, not as energy efficient as they needed to be, lights in, above the stage area. Stage floor, that's a product that is designed to be replaced over time, because there's so many set things that go into it, that get drilled into it. It sits over the actual hardware that gets installed, but that's been about five years now worth of use and is in need of replacement. And also some safety netting on our track behind the lacrosse nets. We have lacrosse practice going on. Kids are running track, lacrosse balls are whizzing by, folks, so decided that it's time to get some netting up to keep that contained. And also installing five water bottle filling stations, so folks can, a lot of all around and bringing in plastic, one-time-use bottles. And also our district-wide efforts to improve our computer wiring and provide a wireless access point in every classroom is ongoing, full swing over the summer. The hope is to have that complete by August, and it's running, running very much on schedule. And that is about it.
Excellent.
For our summer projects.
Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. Any questions?
I like the, I've been by the Heathbrook a few times. I like the, I like the greenery there. It's very nice, the, you know, the preserated wood and the greenery and things like that. I do, just, just a quick question on the exterior doors. Is there a reason we didn't go with a fire exit, acrostor's?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. They have the panic bar on the inside. It is a, when it did go out to bid, it was a like-item bid. One of the things, the first things that we were trying to look at is, many of them had been damaged beyond the energy efficiency. They had been damaged, and we had evidence in some locations that people had gotten into the, through them at nighttime. What specific element within the fire doors would you be...
No, I just noticed that there's a standard closure.
Standard closure on the exterior, panic bar on the...
No, I, again, I just noticed that there's some interior pictures with the standard closure on them.
Yeah, and maybe that's something we can reflect on with the fire department, because the guidance we got was the room capacity level versus that mass and whether they come in together as opposed to a single door.
No, no, just on the single doors.
Right. I don't think that's within the fire code, but we can check that in as well. We can certainly look at retrofitting or looking at a project if we think that's gonna be just safer and a better way to, to...
Right, no, it's just one of those things where it's like, you know, it has to be marked with a sign, and if it's not a fire door, don't, you're not going to...
We have to number the exterior as well, once we're done with the painting and all those pieces.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. There's other pieces that go into that thinking. You're right.
Understood. But, no, overall, like, I, I like all the improvements that I've seen. Like I said, a lot of the, you know, driving around and, you know, biking around, it's, you know, the, I like seeing the, the outsides greening up and the PT out there and the greenery and things like that, the splashes of colors and, you know, just having that, you know, not being so, you know, some of the, the social boards are like, why are these guys doing that? Why are they doing this? It's like, 'cause it's making the place look better, you know, just, you know, it's...
And there's, there's some elements in there, and I think you're right, particularly around social, emotional learning, when students arrive to a building that they feel good about, when they see it from the exterior, they get, and they're not attending that school yet, they see it from the exterior and get excited about going there because of the way it looks and the pieces. And we have old buildings, but there's things we can do to improve their appearance, and we believe that will have an effect on our students and a positive effect on their step.
It's short money for, you know, make a, make a difference for, you know, a year and a half, two years, and, you know, some of those are, you know, eventually gonna come down with a new school, and even still, you're, again, it's short money that you're putting these into, so...
We also could be implementing these areas as learning experiences as well. You could have extensions of your science curriculum out there. You could have it be, you know, for the kiddos in the primary schools in the Heathbrook and they could be going out, even doing some of their reading time out there, and, you know, I don't, I think it looks like, to me, as an extension of a learning space as well.
Plant a flower.
Right, I mean...
And to your point, Ms. Demos, one of the things we'll, because we are running, we have so much activity in our buildings during the summer, there are likely projects that would typically go on in the summer that we're gonna have to do in the school year. But there's opportunities there as well, and how do we incorporate students that? One of the high priorities from the building committee in selecting an OPM and a designer and a construction company was, what kind of things do you offer to students as that building is being instructed, constructed? Do you have learning opportunities particularly geared to the Ryan, which is gonna be right next door to that building project, to not miss opportunities to engage them and watch that building be constructed and use it as a learning opportunity? So we're hoping to, to, you know, capitalize on that opportunity as, as it goes.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
As an aside, Superintendent, just a comment about the, the water filling stations. Has anyone come up at the high school with any kind of initiative? I have one in high school, and she won't drink tap water, but she's good, and she realizes, you know, the plastic and the abundance of plastic, you know. Is there any kind of, hey, let's see how we can try to have the tide here and get people...
Yes. There was an initiative done at the Wynn Middle School this past year that resulted in working with the town that created an opportunity for reusable water bottles on this piece. Part of this education and part of this, as you saw the picture, it just, you know, one of the things that's great about that opportunity, fit into the little vestibule that was designed and already had the plumbing in. As we retrofit some of our schools and look at these opportunities, some of the costs in plumbing and fitting this into an enclosure maybe heavy, but these do come with a filter system, and that's one of the things we do have to publicize more. That this isn't necessarily a nineteen-fifties or sixties water bubbler that you're now putting into a bottle. This is actual filtered water.
Sure.
And chilled, so that we, and, and part of that is, right, we have to get that message out. We hope to capitalize on some student organizations at the high school who can begin to promote this, take, carry on some of the initiatives that were started at the Wynn. It's, that will be many of the students coming in, the freshman class, and really broaden that out. But there is a, I don't know if the stigma is the right word, but there is a, a piece there.
They're big in colleges. If you go to college campuses, you know, UMass Lowell, they're, and the kids use them, you know, so it's just, and it's, I think it's a good, you know, civics thing as well that, that kids are acknowledging that, hey, you know, plastic is, you know, we can only throw it away for so long. It takes hundreds of years to deteriorate, and, you know, like I said, I, I saw it and it just came to my mind that, you know, maybe this might be something then, uh...
Can you hear more about a longer-term plan when we bring the town manager and those students from the Wynn here? Because we still need to get them their water filling stations at the Wynn, and that's a goal in progress right now. So you'll hear more from those kiddos and what they intend to do to spread this.
Excellent.
And we are coming off a two-year mandate and look from the state level, looking at lead contaminants in waters, which affects districts like ours. The amount of testing we had to go through in the repairs into connections and piping that they could have didn't, and, and we're almost complete with that, but anything that would have shown that would have been shut down anyways. But talk about a stigma, if the water you're going to, you don't even know if it has lead or not. We know that this will remove that piece, but we've gotta publicize it, we've gotta sell it, and we've gotta make it part of our culture, absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right, moving along to the consent, consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well. Unanimous vote. Moving on to committee reports. Mrs. Demos, being new to this tonight, I'm sure you're not prepared. I know Mr. Francis used to give the update as well, Mr. Cutler, so hopefully you guys will have an updated report for us at our next meeting.
I'm being told that we have a meeting next Thursday night that I plan to attend, and I will update in August.
Great, excellent. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. And also the Tuckberry Education Foundation, please.
Tuckberry Education Foundation is in the midst of trying to collaborate. A date that we can get together and make a plan for the upcoming year.
Okay.
It is still a work in progress.
I will give the Tuckberry Special Education PAC update. I'd like to report on a very successful CPAC day on the Hill that took place a couple, few, few weeks ago, I believe. I specifically like to thank our state delegation, Senator Feigold, Representatives Tram Wen and Dave Robinson for their assistance along with the CPAC. I unfortunately couldn't make it, but I heard it was a wonderful event. We also met last week. We set an agenda for the year to have monthly meetings between the CPAC leadership and the school district, and they are also looking at hosting a playground social. Last year, they did an afternoon playground social that was very successful. They haven't set a date yet, but it's gonna be sometime in mid-August. It's an excellent opportunity for kids with not only disabilities, learning disabilities or emotional stuff, but regular education students as well to go down and, and meet like-minded folks, so as soon as there is a date for that, I will be more than happy to pass it along. So as for the wellness committee, Mr. Stadman, do you have an update this evening?
I have nothing to report.
Excellent.
It was last month.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to policy changes, proposals and adoptions. There are none, so we're going to move on to old business, the 2019, 2020 athletic out-of-state travel request, and do we have any discussion relative to that?
Mr. Chair, if you will, I'd request to speak prior to the discussion. Old Business Athletic Travel. I've been getting a few emails and calls regarding my statements made during our last monthly meeting on June 12th, when it first came up. Just want to give the committee in town a quick understanding where I am on this, on this discussion. Since I'm new to the school board, I do like any new member should and do. I spend time doing my homework, looking at our existing student policies, so that I can come to these meetings prepared and ready to discuss what the matters hand are. This out-of-state travel request was no exception. I looked at our current student travel policies. We have just two, JJH and IJOA. These two policies are the only ones that deal with student travel. Those are what I was referencing from my line of questions and comments during the last meeting. This has nothing to do with the athletics, the coaches, nor their programs. They are hands-down a great group and an inspiration to our town. I personally cannot wait for the next Wynn so we can recognize their accomplishments here at one of our future meetings. This, this again, has everything to do with the students themselves. In training to be a new student, school committee member, we learn first and foremost, you're here for the students. That being said, this could have been an out-of-state travel request for any other school club. I would have had the same questions about the trips. As far as my reference to the Boy Scouts and how they operate, I understand that no one likes to be compared to other organizations, and for that, I do apologize. Again, I want to ensure that as a member of this school committee and the students themselves are safe whether in their hometown or traveling on an overnight stay or over state lines. That is why I've asked the policy review team to look at both JJH and IJOA for review and to make sure that we're, we are up to the most current mass state laws regarding travel and core standards. I want to thank you to the committees, thank you for this committee's time and allowing me to speak, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman, and I would just like to add that you certainly do not have to thank anyone to speak here. You're always welcome to have open and frank discussion, and certainly no apology is needed, certainly to myself or anyone in the community. So we always appreciate free and open frank discussion, and I certainly thank you for your honesty and your sincerity, so... Does anyone have any other discussion regarding the out-of-state travel request?
Do we need a motion to approve this?
I think we are looking for a motion to...
You could take several options. I think it's in the packet to seek approval, but obviously if the committee could, could...
Believe we tabled it.
Wanted to look at another scenario, table it, or...
I believe we tabled it at the last meeting, seeing how there was really going to be no impact or effect. I think, I thought your tabling it would be, when are we, August 14th next, I think?
It's like September, yeah.
You know, and we have dates up in September or September and October, so I don't know if we have any need for further discussion, or I don't know what the pleasure of the board is at this point, if...
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 TMHS athletics out-of-state travel request, as noted in our packets.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve the out-of-state travel request. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous vote. And just for my own procedural, Mr. Francis was on the policy review team. As the new chair, I'm gonna solicit input from my fellow colleagues to fill that position, and I'd just like it noted on the record that we make sure that whatever Mr. Stadman's recommended changes or suggestions are, that that goes to the policy review committee at that time for, obviously, their review, and then ultimately to come back for the school committee's decision on whether or not we want to change that policy, so... Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And moving on to new business.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you have a request from the Ms. Glass, TMHS Student Council Advisor, to attend the annual student, Mass Association of Student Council's conference in Hyannis. That has been a event that we have taken part in, in a district for many years. It partners with a few other districts because it's a small number of students who have not been determined yet because of student council members, but it partners with Drake at Lowell and North Andover for transportation and, initially for transportation, but what we found is the collaboration that takes place with those districts continues after this conference, which is great. And she is seeking permission to go to that event and bring students.
Excellent. Do we have any questions or discussion for the board? Like to, what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve that. Student Council request to attend the annual Association of Student Council's trip to Hyannis.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Cutler. I have a motion in a second to approve the TMHS Student Council request... I have a motion in a second to approve the TMHS student council request to attend the trip to Hyannis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Moving on to the school committee, matters of interest, I'm going to start with you tonight, Mr. Stadman.
I don't have any, nothing of note.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Cutler?
Most, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Ms. Demos?
Nothing really at this time. I just wanna reflect back to Mr. Libby's presentation and thank everyone that is working so diligently and hard over the summer to get these schools up and running for the kiddos. It'll be here before we know it, and sometimes, you know, it, their work goes unnoticed because no one's necessarily in the buildings as much to notice, and there's a lot going on, and I'm very excited to see that wireless access in all classrooms with all those Chromebooks and one-to-one, getting the technology in hands, to know that they can access the internet regularly, frequently, and uninterrupted is exciting to me.
Excellent. And I would just like to note, with the summer somewhat coming to a close, let's please remind all of our students, we do have summer reading, and the importance of making sure that summer reading is not a punishment. Summer reading is no different than playing an athletic event. You need to practice, so make part of your practice routine, hopefully some summer reading, and that certainly is gonna pay off in dividends during the school year, so. That's all that I have. The future school committee meeting is scheduled for August 14th. We're actually having the school committee administrator workshop here at 3:00 PM with the regular meeting to follow. For those that are unaware, it's, I think, probably my favorite day where we get to sit and actually be presented by all of our district administration and the principals about what is actually going on in our school. So although it's a long day, it's very fulfilling, I know for myself and my colleagues, so we look forward to that. And then the following meeting is on September 18th. Does anyone have any future agenda items? All right, and obviously, please feel free, if you do have anything that you want to be put on the agenda, you can email not only myself, but any one of my colleagues and/or reach out to the superintendent. That being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned at 8:15 PM. Thank you very much.